You are up, Commissioner.
Good morning, everybody. Welcome to Bennett County Commissioners' ... Commissioners' Meeting this morning. We get to start off with Chantel.
Yes, Chantel Lulu, Indigent Services. Case that I have for you is case number 20240041. It's an application for cremation expenses through Wilkes Funeral Home in the amount of $1,200. The applicant is a 28-year-old female who's applying for cremation expenses for her 70-year-old father. The father was a Bennett County resident, was not a veteran. With the information that I did obtain, it does appear that the deceased meets criteria to be eligible for assistance, and the applicant has agreed to a $25 a month repayment plan upon approval of this application.
Okay. Any questions?
Nope.
I would entertain a motion then.
I move that we approve case number 20240041 as recommended.
We have a motion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Thank you.
Misty, looks like you're up. How's Misty this morning?
I'm great. How are you?
Good.
Good morning, everyone. Peyton City Councilor, Chief WD Treasurer. I am here to come back on a re-table for a tax deed hearing issue for parcel RP OAK002300. So we had our tax deed hearing in May, and we had a parcel that had a mobile home on it that Mr. Chad Nelson was going to try to purchase, or go to quiet title.
Right.
It did not happen.
Okay.
So, we're just here to ask for tax deed on this parcel now, so we can put it in the cell.
Okay. And I know he tried to get that to happen.
He did.
What was the impediment that wouldn't allow it?
He had to have been paying for 10 years or more in order for any attorney to even look at trying to do a quiet title, and it hasn't been 10 years.
Hmm, okay.
So this is really the only path for him to do it?
It was. And I had a legal look into it, and they were not able to find anything to be able to get him a quiet title or transfer the property over to him.
Okay. So you recommend that we take this to tax?
Yes.
Which will then give him the opportunity to come in and try to purchase it through the tax deed.
Yes. And I'm in touch with him. He'll be at the cell in October.
Okay.
Okay. Okay. You're good?
Yeah.
Okay, so Mr. Chairman, I recommend that we take the ... Put ... Take tax deed on parcel number RP OAK002300.
We have a motion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay.
Okay. Thank you.
Good morning. Dan McKendall, Facilities Director. I was here last week talking about bids for a pole barn for the freon removal building, and I'm here today to ask for approval to spend $17,000 from the capital acquisition funds to build that building for the landfill. They said they could have it up before winter, so.
Who is they? Is that the Westwood or Westwind Construction?
Yeah, I talked to ... Talked to a couple of companies, and this was the lower bid and more open schedule, and the existing building is a trailer, so it will pull out easily. We will have to adjust the electrical a little bit because it's an underground service, so we'll have to do a little bit of digging to get that hooked back up. But this is probably the most basic building you could ... You could put up, and cheap and easy, so.
And the purpose of this is what?
It's a freon removal building. So when you drop off a refrigerator or AC unit, they pull that stuff out of there that they don't want in the landfill, and then they recycle the metal from it. But the existing building is a trailer that we purchased like 15 years ago, and it was already old when we bought it. So the floor is rotting out in it. I just would rather replace it than try to replace the floor in the trailer.
Okay.
But it'd be super basic, has a little garage door, as you can see, and was put a couple of lights and a couple of outlets. And I think it'll be beneficial to have them on concrete rather than a wood floor, as that stuff spills and makes a mess, and it really rots out that wood. So this was the cheapest idea I could come up with for ... For them.
Okay. John?
And you have plenty of money in the capital acquisition fund?
Yeah, and I did clear it with Ms. Klausert before I came here today, so.
And that includes doing whatever electrical or whatever else has to be done?
Uh, no, that'll be in addition. Yeah.
No, what I mean is the money in the capital acquisition fund covers all of this.
Correct, yes.
Yeah, okay. All right, sounds good.
How much more do you anticipate the electrical being?
I would bet around $5,000. We'll have to dig that line up, put a new ... Put the meter on the new building, and then add some lights and some outlets, so.
So a total cost for the building estimated about $22,000 then?
Correct.
Okay. Okay. And this just has one signature on it, so need to authorize signature?
Okay, you're good with it?
Yeah, I'm okay.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, then I recommend that we approve the purchase of a pole barn for the freon operation up at the landfill, and authorize your signature.
Okay. We have a motion. All in favor, say aye.
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 Thank you.
Thanks, Dan.
Good morning. Adam McKinney, Chief Technical Officer. I brought ...
Heather Sudley, GIS Manager.
Today, we're just seeking a signature on a renewal for our ESRI agreement. The reason that I brought this for a signature from you guys is that this is a new term. We renew this software basically every year. We don't have much choice but to use this software. This is the software that drives all the GIS for the county, including the parcel viewer, the parcel master, 911, basically everything. This is a three-year renewal, though. They've locked the pricing in payable annually, so it's in our budgeted at the same amount, and it will not go up. I think originally it would have gone up by a percentage year over year.
Yeah, like 10% or something like that every year.
So this is a ... That's why we wanted to bring this for signature rather than just to renew it directly, because it should save us some money.
Okay. And talk about the improvements or what ... How ESRI ties into the 911 and what that does for us.
So the ESRI software at the moment is not just 911. It is the primary mapping software for everything. So for the county maps, mobile applications, the mapping in the background that the dispatchers use for 911, that the sheriffs use in the cars for 911. It also ties into all county asset management system as well as the permitting system. So it's all ... It's all of the mapping, everything.
It's the master mapping program for everything that the county does. Basically, it stores all the GIS boundaries and the different layers. So you can, you know, you can see like utility layers and ownership boundary layers, water right layers, things like that. So we've got to maintain that software, and then that ties basically every system we have that utilizes any type of mapping ties into it. So the parcel viewer on the main website, it's directly ... It is ESRI software. All the maps that we've got in the map hub, they're all ESRI software. Vestamap that 911 uses, the changes go into ESRI, and then the 911 system pulls that stuff into it. So this is ... This is the master mapping system for the whole county.
And just because I'm curious, how does the cellphone location work with this or does it? So if I ... If I call 911 on my cellphone, does it interact with the ESRI system, or is it going through like Google Maps to pinpoint me, or?
It ... It ...
That's a complicated question.
The short answer is that it does.
Yeah.
[laughing].
The short answer is that our definitive data that comes out of this ESRI is where the map would get plotted. Now, where your cellphone shows up on that is a matter of where those towers decide to pinpoint you. But the map that dispatch would see that locates you would be this mapping system. The location data itself would come from the cell network. We don't ... We don't manage any of that location data. It's more of a ... It gives you a point in space, and then we give it a map to stick the pin onto.
Gotcha. Okay. Thank you. I was just curious.
Yeah. Yeah, these are big, complex systems.
Yeah, I knew that was a complicated question, so I appreciate dumbing it down for me. Thank you. John, do you have anything?
And we're going to be billed annually for this.
Yes. And this is the same amount that we paid last year, and Heather was diligent enough to get these guys to work a bit of a deal to give us a three-year annual renewal at the same rate. Save ... It's going to save us some money over ... Over the next couple of years, so.
Yeah, that's a pretty good job.
Do you guys ever look at negotiating option contracts when you do these things? In other words, so you would, in your contract, you would ask for options in subsequent years to renew at your discretion?
We had that when we initially got the contract, this enterprise agreement with them. They did kind of a tiered system to help kind of build you into it. Now that we're established with it, there is no option. It is ... The level that we're at is called a small government contract, and it's based on the population of the municipality, in case the county that we serve, and that is how they choose to bill on that one.
Is this something to consider maybe in some of these?
This says 50 to 100,000. So what happens if we, in the next five year or next two years, go over 100,000? Does ... Do we renegotiate, or do we just get it for that last year and then take the bump next year?
As far as I know. It would stay the same for the three years, and then with the next three-year renewal.
Yeah, that ...
Go to the tier.
That's how I understood it as I read it. It would ... If we were to increase population over 100,000 during the time of the contract, it wouldn't change, but then we would be subject to change the next time.
So, for example, if we go to this regional dispatch that we've talked about, would that ... Because our service area would be over 100,000.
No, this is only ... This is only Bennett County's borders. The other counties that we connect with for theirs, they have to provide their own mapping to us.
Oh, okay.
And we integrate it, so we connect to it, but we don't manage. They manage their county boundaries. We manage ours, and we just connect them together. So that would not increase. As we increase the population served by the dispatch, it would not increase the need for our mapping to increase.
Great. Okay, that's all I've got.
All right. Any motion on this side, I assume?
Yes, please.
So, Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the ESRI software contract.
We have a motion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Matthew, you're up.
Thank you. Matthew Phillips, HR and Risk Management Director. Just have before you that we are planning to renew our annual workers' compensation contract with Idaho State Insurance Fund. I don't know if she included a packet for you that I sent for her, but just to make you aware, the rates for different job classifications did not increase. In fact, a couple of them decreased, which doesn't often happen. But because there's been a lot of wage inflation in the labor market, we didn't see increases in there. The experience modification, otherwise known as the E-mod, increased from 1.04 to 1.06. So just really a couple small percentage points. However, that, over the upcoming years, our Human Resources Department, through safety programs and improved work comp processes, our goal is to try to decrease that number to below 1. Basically, Ubersberg's modification is how you compare to other like employers throughout the state. That's how they rate us as far as how much they're going to charge us. So we're slightly above the average, but not by much. However, again, through safety initiatives and the upcoming year improving our reporting process, we're hoping to push that down below 1, so better than the state average. So. But anyway, just making you aware of the renewal and asking your approval to renew with the State Insurance Fund. They've been our carrier for several years, so. And answer any questions you have about our work comp renewal, if you have any.
John?
I don't have any.
I don't have either. So our claims are slightly above the state-level claims, or?
Yeah, just slightly above like employers, but not by like 6%. So if you were to ...
Like employers have 10 claims, and we have 11 or 12?
Yeah, and it really is more based on the claims total and dollar amounts. But yeah, not drastically above. I've inherited much worse E-mods. I once went into a company with a 1.6 E-mod and was able to get it down below 1. So coming into this plan, it's not bad, but I think we can still push it below 1 in upcoming years, or that's going to be the goal. So. But anyway, we should renew for a premium very similar to last year.
Which is nice.
Yeah. Yeah, no.
So the other insurance rates are going crazy.
Absolutely, absolutely. So Chrissy's aware of it, and she's already budgeted for it, so.
Okay.
Any motion on this?
Yeah.
Okay, I move that we go ahead and go forward with the workers' compensation insurance.
We have a motion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Todd and friends.
Good morning. Todd Mager with Bennett County Juvenile Justice. I'm here with ...
Sharon Manning, United Seniors Project. I need a round.
So, over the last year, with the implementation of the village, we've had the opportunity ... I've had the opportunity to have the United Seniors Project, and actually, it's the New Knowledge Adventures program come in and been able to do some learning and discussing about what the village does. And through that process, I feel like there's a ... We've gained a relationship where there's a great opportunity for the seniors in United Seniors Project to kind of team up with those youth at the village to create kind of a mentoring program where maybe we were working on getting some after-school programs going on at the village that would include tutoring, some pro-social activities, and then bringing in the seniors maybe to do some of that tutoring. Possibly, I think there's some seniors that are really good at fly tying and some tutoring stuff. And so, and then maybe the youth could actually work with the seniors to teach them how to use cell phones, those types of things, so we could kind of share knowledge and work together. And so, I'm here with this United Seniors Project for two reasons. One is to just kind of explore and get an approval to move forward on building that relationship and possibly creating an MOU to incorporate them into kind of the after-school programming. We've created a new job position with AmeriCorps, which is a community engagement specialist with the AmeriCorps program, and they will be running after-school programs. And so, in the upcoming months, we're hoping to really implement that. And I'd like to work forward with the United Seniors Project to incorporate a lot of the knowledge and skills they have to maybe create some mentoring and some great opportunities for youth and the seniors in our community. So that's the first thing. I wanted to get permission to move forward on that. The second thing, and I'll turn the time over to Sharon. I know the United Seniors Project is looking to purchase some ground and get a senior center up and going. And so she's approached me with an idea for a fundraiser, and I'll let her present that idea.
First of all, I want to thank you for the letter of support. I had an opportunity to read it last night, and so I think you really have a pretty good handle about what United Seniors Project is. And I have some other material. I have a little pamphlet. I don't know if you'd like these kinds of things. And then NKA, in fact, one of you is going to be teaching a class for with us this semester.
Yeah.
But I have this information. If you'd like me to leave it, and you can go through it if you'd like.
That'd be great. Thank you.
But we wanted to do something that was kind of fun and would just kind of facilitate talking to one another and getting to know one another. And seniors have a lot of treasures left in their closets or other places, and we thought we might have a sharing our treasures sale. And it really would be a garage sale, but we don't want to call it that because we want it to be a little more upscale than that. We don't want to have junky things, but you know, really treasures that the senior population no longer need and their children don't want. And so, in October, at a date to be determined between our two groups, we'd like to have the sale out under the canopies that they have there at the village, and maybe have some pizza for the kids, you know, while they're there, because we thought it'd be a 10 to 3, and then we just, you know, get out. We might have to have a little time on Friday to set up and get ready for the sale, so that we could just pull the tables out under that canopy. But that's kind of what we'd like to do. And the reason we kind of attached ourselves to the village is the property that we have an option on right now is at off of land or between Third and Fourth Street. And so, getting to each other's facility would be really easy when we're finally up and running. And I think I would like to clarify one thing. This would kind of be a lifelong learning center, and there would be other senior groups that would be participating. And United Seniors Project would be the ones that would be making sure that it's sustainable. And so that's why we're doing the fundraising part, because NKA and Snicker River, Horizon Band, they have their own programs that they're running. And so it would be on the shoulders of United Seniors Project to make sure that we're sustainable. So, in a nutshell.
Can I add one thing?
Please.
We thought it would be really cool if we had it at the village, because it gives ... We want to get the kids involved with this, have them help us set up the garage sale, have them help us. So it's going to teach them something, too, and just give them something productive to do and positive, so.
Okay. Do you have any questions?
Yeah.
Comments?
So it's basically, this is the second thing. You're asking to do a yard sale that's open to the public, and you're going to have prices on stuff. People are going to come buy stuff.
Mm-hmm. Yes.
I like the idea of you guys doing this, selling your treasure sale, but I'm not in favor of using county property to do something like that. So I would not be in favor of using the village for that ... For that part of it. On the first part, I'm ... If you're on board with this, which it sounds like you are.
Absolutely.
I think it is very much worth letting you continue to explore this and see what can ... What you guys can come up with. I know HR has some documents related to how volunteers interact with the county, so you definitely have to coordinate with HR and whatever we've set up for them.
I probably would echo what Commissioner Crowder said. You know, I love NKA, have been involved with that project for a long time. And when you guys came and visited with me about the United Seniors Project and your idea for your center, I wholeheartedly support that. So I think it's great that we're going to try to bridge the gap and bring the two generations together. I think that's a fantastic idea. So again, I fully support that, but I'm not real comfortable having the treasure sale on the property as well. And I get the intent behind it, but I think bigger picture, it just sets a precedence for other things that I don't know if we necessarily want to have on there. So that's where I would probably land on that. So, do you want to make a motion then?
Yeah. So I would move that we deny the request to use county property for the sale, but approve going forward and working with United Seniors Project to see what Todd and his group can develop of it.
Okay. Any further discussion? Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay.
Would you want me to leave this?
Yeah.
Yeah, leave that stuff for sure.
Yep.
Okay.
Great.
You can just leave it right there.
Perfect.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So the third thing I have on my ... On the agenda is the job descriptions. I was in several months ago, like, and you're aware, when we made the transition from the Juvenile Justice Department to the village, we had revamped all of our different job descriptions and responsibilities that people were doing. And so, the last one I have is we adjusted the youth court coordinator job description, which is a grade eight, 19 hours per week, to a citation process and youth prevention coordinator, which is the same grade eight, 19 hours a week. It's been reviewed by HR, and it's ran through their office. I just wanted to come in and get approval and present it to the commission today to make that adjustment.
Matthew, you got any comments on this?
I've already given my suggestions to Todd, and I think he's integrated them into the job description, if I remember correctly. Right?
Mm-hmm.
So I have reviewed it, yes.
Okay.
And I'm fine with the changes he's made.
Okay. John?
Jason, you guys got any concerns?
All right, I'm fine.
Okay, then, go ahead.
All right, then I move that we approve the change in job description as requested.
We have a motion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks, Todd.
Here's the ...
Great.
All right, well, thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning, Commissioner. Shanda Crystal, Chief Procurement Officer. I have a procurement update for the board this morning. If you want to start at the top of your dashboard with the Roderick Bridge County Fleet purchases. This is a program that was started in fiscal year '25, so we're not quite there, but we did want to get all of the paperwork out of the way in talking and discussing with Kyle and Buddy out at Roderick Bridge. For this year, we both felt comfortable moving forward with a piggyback option off of a state contract, and so we were pulling down those documents to making sure that aligns with what the county needs. I do know that Buddy has been in conversations with Christie as far as what has been approved and the dollar amounts for the vehicles that we were found. So this is an ongoing discussion, but at least we've started pulling down those documents that if the decision is made to move forward with certain purchases, that we'll have all of those procurement things out of the way and ready for them just as soon as they get permission to move forward for those purchases. If we want to jump down to the active bids for the fairgrounds, the Steel Shell Building was published last Friday as planned, and there'll be another publishing this Friday. We did send out and invited six local companies to bid on that project as well. Our other active project that we have is for Roderick Bridge Winter Road sale that we have. Questions are due tomorrow, and then our responses to any questions received are due on Friday for that bid. For the Annex storefront, that bid was canceled because we didn't receive any bids on there, but we have reached out to various companies. As Daniel predicted, it's been difficult to get somebody interested in that project, but then he thought that we already have CM Company ripping out the roadway, and so he approached them. They are putting together an estimate for review for down. So at least we have somebody that's at least interested, but as far as the dollar amount goes, that is yet to be seen, but would be brought before the board when we know more on that project. I have received all the documentation I need for the Annex lighting, and that will come for review and signature request for the board next Tuesday. And I'm continuing to gather up documentations for the cement polishing that was awarded out at the detention center for them. My final update is on the emergency management, the Lava Ranches project. If you might recall, charity came before the board asking for an extension on that project, and IDL has approved that extension, and charity is moving forward with a contractor requesting signatures, and then that will come before the board for full ratification also.
And did we get ... Will that be the third one? I was talking with Wes yesterday, and he said we got approval for ... So we'll have three fuel reduction projects going.
I am uncertain of what Wes was referring to. This is number two. This is actually the one that we started with Smith Gulch last year.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, that wasn't able to, and that we were able to switch over to propose a different. That is why we had to ask for the extension on it, because it was a different project originally, is what this one is.
Yeah, I think he got notified yesterday morning that we were approved for that third project.
Great.
And I don't have my notes. I don't remember which one it was he said, but.
Yeah, we had a couple of them put before.
Do you remember Nancy?
Good Neighbor Authority.
Yeah, the Good Neighbor Authority.
And the Crystal Springs, and the three areas.
Yeah. Okay.
Excellent. Okay. So we'll get all those just as soon as we can. But yeah, this one should be finally under contract and come back before the board hopefully next week.
Which ... What do you say?
For Lava Ranches, for this one, right? The extension has been granted, and as soon as we can gather up signatures from the contractor, it will come back before the board for review and signature.
On the Steel Shell Building, you have the request for proposal published, may I ask? Is that what you were saying?
Correct. Uh-huh.
And so that means people can now make proposals and send them in?
So I ... Sorry, I do want to clarify. So we are asking for low bid on the Steel Shell. We feel that any company can do what we ask them, as long as they stay within our scope of work, right, to respond the way that we want them to. So we're doing low bid, so we're not asking for various types of proposals.
Oh, okay.
We're going to go.
So you've set out, we want the size of a steel shell to come in, and you guys are going to put the cement down for this, or how's that going to work?
No.
They're going to do everything?
Yeah. So for the shell.
Yeah.
And then we're going to sub out the work to finish the interior plumbing, electrical.
Right.
Yes.
And when are those bids due?
I think it's the second full week in October is when they're due back to us. But I can double-check. I believe the ...
They'll have bid opening and all that stuff.
Oh, correct. Yeah, yeah. Yep, it'll publish again this week. The pre-bid meeting on that is going to be, I believe, the 27th of September.
Okay.
And then they'll have questions and answers due that first week of October, with bids due the following week. I just can't remem- with bids due the following week. I just can't remember the exact day. Maybe the 7th of October.
Where is the bid... I'm sorry, what did you call it to give?
The pre-bid meeting?
Pre-bid meeting. Where's that going to be?
So, when?
Where?
Where. So, I did talk to Dan yesterday about this, if it would be beneficial at all to hold it down in Downey so they could see the site. And for the travel and moving the contractors out there, he said there wouldn't be that much benefit. It's a plain site, so we're going to Google and mark it on a map to say that this is the building site. It's open to the public. They're free to go out and look at it anytime. But we did feel it would be most advantageous to have the pre-bid meeting here at the courthouse.
Okay, and on the Annex storefront, what exactly are we... Did we ask people to do on this bid that we've gotten a bid on?
So, we're trying. We've asked them to update the front of the building to match more closely how the courthouse and the elections office is going to look. So, tearing out the front, redoing the lettering, lighting. So, that's why we're not getting a ton of interest, because there's not a ton of work to do. But to match the updates that we're doing to the courthouse and the...
I know one of the things is that the residential siding that's down there below, putting more of a commercial-grade siding there and then matching the color. So, it's a lot of signage and color scheme to match. So, I had an experience just yesterday, in fact, that a woman was looking for the DMV, and she had parked over there, walked all the way around the construction, and then said, "Oh, I didn't even realize that that was a county building."
Shit.
So, I sent her all the way back around the construction and back in the assessor's door to get into the DMV.
Seems like we need a sandwich board or something.
Yeah.
Here we are.
And it'd be a sign flipper.
Yeah, there you go.
Pizza guy.
Are you, are you aware of what they just did, the project that was just done at the Community Rec Center in Pocatello? Because they did a lot of outside work, new signage, facade. That was financed by, I think, Port of Health Trust. So, they might be able to say, "Hey, here's who did it for us." And that might give you another lead.
Perfect.
And they really did a good job. It looks really nice.
Okay, perfect. I will reach out to them and see if I can't get another company that we can approach.
Yeah, anyway, that's all I had. So, thank you. I noticed a lot of work for you. So, I appreciate you staying on top of this.
Perfect. We'll get it done.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, next on the agenda is reading and signing the Patriot's Day proclamation. And since I won't be here, if you don't mind, I'll read it, because I know you like to read this stuff.
I'll be reading it. I love it, so that should be good.
All right, so the proclamation reads, "Whereas on September 11th, 2001, the American people endured the worst terrorist attack on U.S. soil in the nation's history with courage and heroism. And whereas in response to this tragedy, Americans across the country came together in a remarkable spirit of patriotism and unity, carrying out countless acts of bravery, kindness, generosity, and compassion. And whereas, community organizations and family members of 9/11 victims began observing the anniversary of September 11th to honor the memory of those who were lost and those who united in response to the tragedy, including first responders and volunteers. And whereas, those who put their lives in harm's way on a daily basis to protect our citizens are deeply appreciated, and whereas, 23 years ago, first responders found themselves in the front lines of war, and whereas, first responders and volunteers sacrifice in service every day for our community, keeping us all safe and secure. And whereas, on September 11th, 2024, we embrace an opportunity to honor 9/11 victims and heroes on behalf of our community. Now therefore, we, Bannet County Commissioners, Ernie Moser, Jeff Huff, and John Crowder, do hereby proclaim September 11th, 2024, as Patriot's Day in Bannet County. And we call our citizens attention to this observance and appropriate ceremonies to honor the lives of those lost through remembrance and celebration of their dedication to our country. And witness thereof, we set our hands on this day, the September 10th, in the year of 2023. Bannet County Board of Commissioners." Oh, yeah, 2024, sorry.
Well, I know it says 23.
No, it's 24. I just...
It's that one line.
Yep. Oh, yeah, yeah. There we go.
Yep.
Close enough. I would move that we approve the proclamation as presented.
All in favor, say aye.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Got me all discombobulated on that one. And speaking of local heroes, Commissioner Crowder and I had the opportunity to go to Lava last night and participate in a recognition dinner for the volunteers of the ambulants and firefighters. And that was a great event. There were a lot of people there. Again, just a quick thank you to all those who do take care of us, whether you're a volunteer or the full-time. So, thank you. With that, we have three resolutions, and we have a change. Resolution 2024-60 has been removed.
Correct.
Yes.
Okay, so we've adjusted the resolutions down a number. So, on the agenda, what was listed as Resolution 2024-61 will now be Resolution 2024-60, Authorization to Transfer Assets and Property to the State of Idaho. And what was previously known as Resolution 2024-60 will now be Resolution 2024... Or, excuse me, Resolution, that was Resolution 2024-62.
No, 61.
It will now be 2024-61, Authorizing the Destruction of Ag Extension Files. So, I don't know if I made that clear enough or not, but...
Clear enough for me.
Okay.
Nancy will make it very clear.
Yes. Thanks for helping me muddle through that. Nope, nope. I think we're all good. So, I'll entertain a motion on that.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve Resolutions Robison versus 2024-60 and 2024-61 as presented.
We have a motion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. So, next we have the claims and, let's see, no, not claims, signature-only, which is the Commissioners' Proceedings for August of 2024. Do you have any comments or concerns on these? Okay, I would move that we approve the Commissioners' Proceedings as presented. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, we have the claims and consent agenda, and I don't see... Don't see anything for the Board of Ambulants, so we don't have to do that. So, we have a Commissioners' Report. Credit card receipts.
Feels like I'm missing one of those.
There should be two.
Yep. Alcohol licenses. We have minute certification for August 29th, September 3rd, and September 5th. That's it.
All right, Mr. Chairman, I move that we present the, I mean, we approve the consent agenda as presented.
We have a motion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And that will, we will then stand adjourned until 11 o'clock, where we have the...